Heavenly Father, we come before you as a county here in Wyoming asking for guidance and direction to be fair, equal, across the board, and Jesus in our name.
Amen. This is your Lord God. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to your agenda?
Grandpa was not able to give that estimate for the elevator, we need to remove that. And then after our meeting last night, we need to add library floor and new business. However, so we have the approval of the budget prior, so we need to add new business possibly before the budget. This discussion will also budget.
Why don't we switch new business with Ralph Shaw's business?
We can't do that because Ralph's coming in.
We can still put new business before. They said they were. I haven't seen them.
At 11:00, I don't know the budget.
That's fine. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Have the approved agendas amended? I have a motion, and then I have a second.
A second?
Motion, improperly seconded, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. First up is the consent agenda, so if there's anything that needs to be changed in the consent agenda, I'm here. Motion to approve consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
This is proposed. Alright, moving forward. Can I hear them?
Your guys, this microphone is muted.
How's that? Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody has their own.
I can't hear them.
Your guys, this microphone is muted.
How's that? Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. How's that? Is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody has got one. Yeah, who's got one?
You're showing my picture?
No, I didn't know you had one.
Oh, wow. Okay. Hello?
Hello?
Oh, I don't know.
It's for the presentation. Go wide dot presentation. You're not signing anything. You're not committing a letter.
We'll start right off with public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, start off with Scott Taylor. Welcome, Scott.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I am Governor Edmond.
No, just let him do it.
We were discussing that.
Just, um... One second, I have something else, and I'm trying to get it up on the screen.
You made a note on your computer what you're looking at there, and then...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They sent an email.
I sent it. It's probably...
Yeah, I'm looking. The email I got is right here at 8:59. It's not there.
You can do a thumb drive if you want to go back up.
Last year, we plugged into the TV. Yeah, that might help if I knew that. I got it up there. Yep. Western County. There you go. I'm trying to plug it in, click it here, and you did go. Now, Mr. Chair, click on the presentation mode right there. Close. I'm getting close, but I'm not there yet. Here. You might have to close out all of those. There you go. And close this. There you go. There you go. Let's try to get it. Let's try to sign in, see what happens.
Just do handouts.
Yeah, I guess we'll go through the handouts, yeah. It appears to be there, but it's not. Computer won't allow the power for it.
Can you switch from page to page on there?
No, because that thing keeps popping up.
Can you save this?
No, it doesn't. Can he get it open? Alright. Sorry about that. I've done this before, so...
I have a few extra copies of the presentation.
That was a bad point. Okay, Mr. Chair, Mr., thanks for having us again. I'm Scott Taylor with the Wyoming DOT District 4 District Engineer, which is northeast Wyoming. And this is our annual STIP tour. This is our state transportation improvement program. Run your way here.
You go where you need to go.
Alright. So, first page there, okay? YDOT District 4 map. Our boundary is basically from the top of the big horns over, over here in South Dakota.
And south on 85.
Down past New York Junction, a little bit in Ivory County. All Sheridan County, half of Johnson. Ninety-eight percent of Campbell County, all of Crete, and all of Western County. So, what we're going to go through today is an overview of YDOT, how we develop our state transportation improvement program, the projects in the area, and what those next steps will be after that. Next slide down, talking about YDOT leadership. We do have a direct, fairly new director. About a year ago, he came aboard, Darren Westy, in headquarters in Cheyenne. Mark Gillette's our chief engineer, myself, Transportation Commissioners, Susan Holmes is the chair, and she represents Sheridan, Johnson, Campbell Counties, and Mark Hughes is the transportation commissioner in this area, and he represents Weston and Crete County. Locally, or I shouldn't say locally, our administrative staff, our district office is in Sheridan. We have the district maintenance engineer, Larry Knetsky. Isaac Finkel, who couldn't be here today, is our district construction engineer. We do have Michelle Edwards here, our district traffic engineer. We have equipment supervisor, Mr. Tim Winslow. Laura Dallas, our public relations specialist, is here, and she organizes all this, built this presentation, and got that going. Jason Green's our safety officer. We have HR Jenny Sullivan, and captain of the district is Ben Schlosser. Locally here for Weston County area, we continue to have this vacant resident engineer position. It's two years now. Two years in July, so no success, just not getting any apps still. And it's a bummer. So, we do Josh Junk, our Gillette RE there, has been helping out and acting as the RE here, so. However, I do want to introduce Becky Dietrich. She's fairly new engineer. Been here since February-ish, right? Yep, and so she's an engineer two on the crew. And so, I don't know how she got talked into coming to this today, but she maybe got guilty today, too, right?
That's what she wanted to talk.
Yeah, right. Right. Yep. Brad March is area maintenance supervisor, and covers Weston and Crete County. And then also here is Guy Phillips, our maintenance foreman, sitting right up front here. Dean Bethay is our shop supervisor, and Joel Lambert comes on down to help out with mechanics from Sundance, and Lieutenant Tim Baumister's our lieutenant, or excuse me, lieutenant for the area. Also here for us today is Mr. Bob Bonds with the FHWA, is an area engineer for us there with federal highways, okay? So, going about the STIP, talking about that over the next six years, but it's first one to overview of what we got in the district. You know, there's a slide there. Next, talks about how many miles of road we got, over 3,300 miles that we take care of, over 270 bridges, 500 roughly 30 structures, which are boxes and pipe. Big boxes and big pipe, 7,500 pipe, 150 miles of guardrail, over almost 13,000 signs we take care of, and then over 2,000 miles of fence. However, I know a few weeks ago, we lost three and a half miles. Did you get that rebuilt yet? Yeah, it's done. So, we're back to 2,000 or 3,000. We lost three and a half miles here in Weston County, so everybody probably knows from the fire. So, purpose, mission, vision, and values, what we do, why we do it, is to support our economy and quality of life, provide a safe and efficient transportation system with excellence in transportation. We do this with our values. Provide a safe and efficient transportation system with excellence in transportation. We do this with our values, which is respect, integrity, dedication, excellence, and safety, of course. We do have our areas of focus and strategic objectives. Major area of focus is recognize, retain, recruit our employees, which is our most important asset, and secure national funding, or additional funding, excuse me, and develop the brand, which we're working on right now. Working on developing our brand and how we want to promote ourselves, okay? Strategic objectives is to serve our customers always, ensure transparency and public engagement. That's why we have these meetings, to make sure the local entities and local agencies know what we're doing and want to be able to coordinate with us on that, and then engage in the public. And these are public meetings, and this is why we do this, too. Value our team, develop, maintain those partnerships, manage our resources, and continue to improve and innovate at all times. Our guiding principles is always to align our expenditures with the revenue we have coming in, focus on addressing our needs for our identified critical life safety issues, such as if we have any slides going on, or all of a sudden guardrails taken out, there's critical life safety issues, alright? So, we do have those once in a while, especially up north here, right, Guy? Prioritize our asset preservation based on the condition of that to meet our established goals, improve operational effectiveness and efficiency, and prioritize activity to minimize negative impacts to the public. Always address our mobility and capacity through system improvements. That's lower on the list. We are not addressing capacity and mobility right now due to revenue streams that are lacking to build out. So, we're in preservation mode. Programs within YDOT, a lot of these are in headquarters in Cheyenne, engineering and planning's our designers. Construction, construction crew that Becky's on, like, and get maintenance courses, Guy and his crew, equipment, we went through that. Hybrid controls under us, aeronautics, driver services, and so forth, okay? Federal funding pots coming in for fiscal year '25 is our biggest chunk right there. We have almost $200 million on our national highway performance program, so federal dollars. And then our next largest there is surface transportation block grants, which is basically a surface transportation program of almost 100 million. And then some other little ones coming in there to the other local agencies, too, with the Crip and BROS and CMAC, and which you folks are definitely familiar with. Next slide, over $360 million from the federal highway bill for fiscal year '25. State versus federal funding on that, and national average for that is about 70% state funds and 30% fed funds for all states, national average. However, Wyoming's the opposite of that in YDOT. We get about 70% federal dollars and only 30% state funds coming in with our state revenue stream, so always want to point that out. Funding sources coming in for local state or local agencies that come from YDOT to the cities and the governments. There's state maps that we provide of almost half, basically, $44 million coming in for these projects, such as commission road improvement programs, bridge off system programs, the CMACs and stuff like that, okay? And then 10 cent money we got coming in from the gas, gas hatches, there's almost 15 million in the local max from the head of agencies, such as Weston County, of about 30% and over $25 million, okay? So, purpose of us developing the STIP is to get public input, need to know what local agencies are working on, and then during, and still continue that overview of YDOT. There are federal requirements, CFR should say 23. 23 is why we do a STIP, is to be developed for all areas on a four-year plan. We actually do it for six. We, you know, we work with the NPOs, if there are any, and which are our cast from Cheyenne, any non-metropolitan areas, so all, all local governments, okay? Consult with any tribal governments if need to, provide opportunities for the public to comment, and you'll hear me say that over and over probably. Ensure inclusion of capital and non-capital transportation projects, consistency of that longer age plan, have that financial plan, how that STIP's going to affect in performing, achieving our performance targets, and allow flexibility in that with the dynamics that we have throughout the year. Why does it matter? For that transparent public engagement, like I said, okay? Get that public comment and information, engage with you folks, consistently update, make it available, make it available, and provide the interactive map, which I'll show later. Developing, maintaining strategic partnerships. We have the transportation commission, like I said, the aeronautics commission, the public service commission, and so on. Citizens, CMP, I already said that, transportation, other transportation agencies, the local governments. We maintain these with trainings for the local governments, we provide that for the programs there. Engineered co-op meetings, meetings with our commissions on a monthly basis, and project meetings with the stakeholders, and public meetings during those projects if warranted. It serves our customers by ensuring priority projects for each area during each fiscal year, sorry, increase the system reliability and design, increase customer satisfaction, ensuring projects are done quickly and effectively, always striving to minimize impacts to our traveling public and local agencies and businesses. That's, that's what we're here for, to minimize those impacts. Update and modification to customers of new changes, projects, and budget, and decrease construction time as much as possible. It also allows us to get creative in solving complex problems, the STIP does. Innovative designs to ensure safety, improving payment and bridge conditions, implementing new standards, incorporating them, revising and revamping it throughout the year. Also need to want to mention, we have a shelf goal, basically projects on the shelf that are ready to go in case we get an influx of money or projects need to be shifted around. So, our shelf goal is always to have $330 million ready to go, final plans, and that's a year's worth of projects, obviously, roughly. So, we do that quite often. You know, this time of year, towards the end of our fiscal year, which is October 1 or September 30th, sometimes we will get extra federal dollars that's out there available that other states haven't used, and that's when we'll utilize this shelf. So, if we got shelves ready, or projects ready to go in this area, which we do that are on the shelf, we can cut leaks on that, so. So, the process, we do have the planning, which is the development of the STIP, any recon, reconnaissance meetings that reports surveys and public input. Of course, then we have design, all kinds of plan issues throughout that. And again, public meeting, they have in one of these stages. Public meetings as appropriate, public meetings as appropriate for each one during design and contract phase. There is the online STIP project map, like I referenced earlier. Go to our website, you can click on those balloons in your area, and you can find anything you want to know about that project, where it's at, scope, engineers' estimates, and then there's also a window in there to provide comments and input on what you'd like to see on that project. So, distribution per counties in our district for the next six years. If I remember right, I don't have my glasses on, but Weston County's getting roughly $53 million over the next six years. Is that what that's at? Roughly, okay? So, project scheduled in the next six years for this area. Of course, we have the bridge going on in town right now. It's not listed here, but that's because it was in previous years that we did, okay? And contractors continually working on there. We do have various locations of guardrail authorities in the district on Highway 85 north of here, and so that's in 24. 25, we do have an overlay on Highway 450 between Newcastle and Wright, obviously, for about 13 and a half miles, for almost $7 million, okay? Also, you guys might know about this one, 2025, we have the bridge over the railroad on Highway Old 85 on County Road 1A, right? There it is for $5 million. And that'll go, if I remember right, that's in the, I want to say November light. Do you remember, Becky?
Which one?
The bridge over the railway. You know what light that's in?
I think it should be December.
December, okay, yeah. So, fiscal year '25. 2026, another millon overlay between Sundance and Upton, north of Upton, for three and a half, almost $4 million. And then the following year, south of Upton, we'll be doing that, and as we've talked about before, we have some pretty good damage going on on that Highway 16 right now due to the frac sand hauling, right? So, we will be addressing that, doing some reconstructions on the south end. We have placed a weight restriction on those trucks right now for the south of Upton. If they're hauling on that still, Mr. Phillips could verify, if they are, they're hauling as per that weight restriction now. I don't know if they're running up 60 inch or something. And then, so we're keeping an eye on all those roads if we're getting more damage, and we might have to implement some more, so, okay? Also in '27, there's that FDR project listed there, that commission road improvement program we have with you folks for County Road 1A. So, the next year after the bridge, then we'll get that to contract, that $900,000 is the old number. We are in the process of getting estimates put together, so I can come talk to you folks again on, okay, here's the options, here's what the costs are, right? We've done in the past, and then we can go from there. So, that 900 will be updated here shortly. So, I can tell you, we're real close to those estimates, and me or the locals will be in contact with you, okay? We can get that going, and probably by the next meeting. Also, in that year, we have two other bridges, Beaver Creek and the one right next to it. Bridge Replacements is our bridge funding program, those, and I think one of those, well, the one listed last there is the one that caught a fire, and so it's over $4.5 million, and the other one's a box culver going in just down the road from it for $400,000. Nothing in 2028, but I can almost promise you that will change, the way this thing is dynamic. Then 2029, Upton to Osage West on 16 for $15 million millon overlay, and then 2030, Lack ville Creek section on the 5, another millon overlay. So, there's that, almost $53 million at the bottom of the reference earlier on that pipe there. So, that's what's going on in Weston County over the next six years. Next slide doesn't apply to this area. Those are projects that are being delayed because we're not addressing mobility and capacity right now in our district, and the ones in Sheridan, the ones in Gillette. There's those bridges I named just a little bit ago that are in 2027, 20, yeah, 2027, that I named in Beaver Creek, okay? Federal Transit. public meetings as appropriate for each one during design and contract phase. There is the online step project map like I referenced earlier. Go to our website, you can click on those balloons in your area, and you can find anything you want to know about that project, where it's at, scope, engineers' estimates, and then there's also a window in there to provide comments and input on what you'd like to see on that project. So, distribution per counties in our district for the next six years. Um, if I remember right, I don't have my glasses on, but Weston County's getting roughly 53 million dollars over the next six years. Is that what that's at? Roughly? So, project scheduled in the next six years for this area. Of course, we have the bridge going on in town right now, it's not listed here, but that's because it was in previous years, but, uh, we did, okay? And contractors continually working on there. We do have, uh, various locations of guard rail authorities in the district on Highway 85 north of here. And, uh, so that's in 24. 25, we do have a overlay on Highway 450, uh, between Newcastle and Wright, obviously, for about 13 and a half miles for almost 7 million dollars, okay? Also, you guys might know about this one, 2025, we have the bridge over the railroad on Highway Old 85 on County Road 1A, right? There it is for 5 million dollars. And that'll go, if I remember right, that's in the, uh, I want to say November, like, you remember Becky?
Which one?
The bridge over the railroad. You know what, like, I think that's in?
Oh, I think this should be December this year.
December, okay, yeah. So fiscal year '25. 2026, another millon overlay between Sundance and Upton, north of Upton, uh, for three and a, almost 4 million dollars. And then the following year, south of Upton, we'll be doing that, and as we've talked about before, we have some pretty good damage going on on that Highway 16 right now due to the frac sand hauling, right? So, we will be addressing that, doing some reconstructions on the south end. We have placed a weight restriction on those trucks right now for the south of Upton. If they're hauling on that still, Mr. Phillips could verify, if they are, they're hauling as per that weight restriction now. No, they're running up 60. And then, so we're keeping an eye on all those roads if we're getting more damage, and we might have to implement some more, so, okay? Also in '27, there's that FDR project listed there, that Commission Road Improvement Program we have with you folks for County Road 1A. So the next year after the bridge, then we'll, uh, get that contract, that 900,000 is the old number. We are in the process of getting estimates put together, so I can come talk to you folks again on, okay, here's the options, here's what the costs are, right? We've done in the past, and, uh, and then we can go from there. So that 900 will be updated here shortly. So, I can tell you that we're real close to those estimates, and me or the locals will be in contact with you, okay? We can get that going, and probably by the next meeting. Also, in that year, we have two other bridges, Beaver Creek and the one right next to it. Bridge Replacements is a bridge funding program. Those, and I think one of those, well, the one listed last there is the one that caught a fire. And, uh, so it's over 4 and a half million dollars, and the other one's a box culver going in just down the road from it, uh, for 400,000. Nothing in 2028, but I can almost promise you that will change, the way this thing is dynamic. Then 2029, Upton to Osage, uh, west on 16 for 15 million dollar millon overlay, and then 2030, Lackville Creek section on the 5, another millon overlay. So there's that, almost 53 million dollars at the bottom that I referenced earlier on that pipe though. So that's what's going on in Weston County over the next six years. Next slide doesn't apply to this area, those are projects that are being delayed because we're not addressing mobility and capacity right now in our district, and the ones in Sheridan, ones in Gillette. There's those bridges I named just a little bit ago that are in 2027, 20, yeah, 2027, that I named in Beaver Creek, okay? Federal Transit Projects, the Federal Transit Administration and the Wyoming Legislature, of course, it spends to YDOT for public transit. Weston County and Newcastle does, uh, participate in this program. It's for public transit, primarily provided for senior centers within state. There's a local match for the agency, or, yeah, the agency of 15 to 50%, depending on funding type, and applications are always, uh, on, available online from March to March 1 to middle April. Therefore, operating and administering preventive maintenance of public transit operations to replace and rehabilitate and purchase buses for multi-modal transportation planning and intercity bus transportation. And like I said, we do have that going on here in the state of Newcastle. Also, grant opportunities, that, that next slide on our website there, there's, if anybody is interested in competitive federal grants for zero emissions, highway safety, economics, local government transportation programs, we go to that, and, uh, there's a gentleman at the end here that I'll reference that is a grant guru for YDOT in Cheyenne, but there is all kinds of grants out there available for, and, uh, and I highly encourage counties and towns to look at that. Next, next up, contact YDOT to learn about opportunities for all that funding, partnerships and supply purchases, visit our step page, provide feedback. Of course, I introduce myself and Mr. Gillette, we have two Assistant Chief Engineers in Cheyenne, one for engineering plan, Keith Fulton, and, uh, and then my supervisor is Tom Dehoff, he's Assistant Chief of Operations. Sarah Ellis is our Local Government Coordinator, uh, she's been up here many times visiting him about the federal transit program and tax opportunities and stuff like that. John Davis is our guru for grants. That's the gentleman in Management Services, and any grant information, he is the guy to help assist with the grant applications. So, to repeat, please visit our step page if you have anyone providing feedback. And that concludes our presentation. Now, if there's any questions or comments, we can take those too.
Can you explain that to me, Scott? Why is the Wyoming State Wyoming 27% and 73%?
I'm gonna try, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Congressman. It's a, it's a formula thing, and I would go with a population thing. Maybe Mr. Bond can help me out here?
A little bit, hopefully. So, federal funding is over 70%. It's actually a fair amount over that with all of the other grants that YDOT applied for and received. And it's basically because YDOT, um, is a through state IED and gets a massive amount of fuel tax revenue, and it's a boney state, so it's, I mean, and the state of Wyoming doesn't contribute hardly anything to YDOT on the state side. General fund is, I think, less than 5%.
Right, yeah.
Hopefully that helps.
No, and, and I can answer that, we don't receive any general fund money like other state agencies, so it is way less than 5%, zero. You know, our revenue comes in from federal, you know, taxes and for gasoline, these things is what we get from the state. And that is just for operations, so maintenance, traffic, and then 10% match on federal contracts and destruction. So snowplowing is strictly state.
Any other questions for Scott? I'd like to say that we are lucky to have the crew that we have. I've got Dulce, my, my, and then I've worked with him before, he does a great job, we're lucky to have you, the communication with the board, and we really do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, uh, the folks here in this area and the maintenance and destruction and what they do is first class, and they're on top of it, nail it.
Okay, there's no other comments or questions, and we'll let you continue on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That the CEO, he, he was building a case for Piper Allard's removal. There was no doubt that that was revealed in that meeting. Was working with personnel from H&amp;H Leadership Solutions to do that. So, this situation now, who knows what information gets uncovered with an active, aggressive, targeted investigation with a purpose? You can generate information about people, you don't know if it's true, you don't know if it's valid, but if you have that information, you can't let people go back to work. I have, I know nothing, the board's done a good job of not telling anybody anything, because this is a true sticky personnel situation where you have to be very careful for Piper's protection, because God knows what's been said about her or turned up about her, but the, once those things are said, you have to investigate them. And so the board's in a position where they have to follow through on that and bring closure to that.
I'll call you in to see if you want all the agents. It's kind of small, I can't see it, sorry. Anyway, what I'm showing you is that this is our checking account that we have out of Fairgrounds. Um, the first part is the $10,000 you guys have given us and what we've spent it on. Um, we have all of our checks made out for there for the judges in that total, and then premiums are gonna have to come out of that, the meals for the judges for the week, motel for the, um, the livestock judges, and we need to buy stamps. Premiums are gonna be around 2,200 dollars out of that. I mean, we, it just depends how many entries we have and how they do it. Okay, and the second one is our donations for specific things, you can see, uh, see them there. Um, we have to, out of the ranch rodeo, we still have to pay for two judges for the ranch rodeo and our prizes, so that's gonna be depleted, and all of it, and the tournament, the 247 dollars is for the boards. And there's, there's a few other things that are gonna come out of that as the week goes by next week. The next one is our NAEX deposits that are in, that we have gotten for the last year. And, um, and, um, the last one is our income for the last year. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that place will never make a profit. I don't care what you do, it will never be making a profit.
On, um, on that issue, you know, uh, ran some numbers last night, you know, for us to like turn a profit, just use like the multi-day facility rate, uh, we'd have to rent it out 121 times throughout the year, with a multi-day facility rate, which would be three days, that's, means it's rented out every single day, and now we're getting a 16,000 dollar profit this tomorrow. That's not, that's not happening. We get, I think, six right now, multi-day facilities, that's kind of the high end. Um, and, you know, we've, I've, I've brought it up here before, suppose your last fall, we were in here quite often, um, you know, a fairgrounds is measured by not how much money it brings in to the fairgrounds itself, building and everything, rentals, but what it can generate for your gas stations, for your hotels, for your restaurants, for your stores, you know, you get a good, good turnout for an event, and everyone's gonna buy gas, everyone's gonna buy, um, you know, in the summertime, they're gonna buy ice, beer, hamburger, whatever. Um, I use, I've used Sundance for a prime example, we really have, uh, uh, their Skidmore event, um, Fairgrounds, Main Street shutting down today, which I knew I'd dig it up, but let's see what they generate off of those. The taxes alone, they generate off of that one day is phenomenal. Um, and that's, it's kind of what, and the one part about it is the younger generation coming in, it's on, and myself, my wife, we put on a youth rodeo in the spring, we had people coming from Casper, we had people coming from Gillette and everywhere, and right after, we got them material changed in the end door, and they loved it, and we like to keep up, just kind of going off that, but, uh, um, the word spreads, people are looking, and we have another younger producer coming in in August and putting on a really big, big money jackpot team open, in Brickwood open, and there's gonna be some people traveling for that, um, and we've been spending some money in town, and we're just looking to build off that, facing those other board members, done a lot of work with the track, um, and, you know, the sprint, sprint cars were kind of, were kind of dead in the water, so we switched that track up, and, um, looking, every tough truck I've seen has had a pretty good turnout, these building on maps. Just got to touch base, it's, uh, it's kind of an off the count subject, but it's kind of where we're, where we're hopes and going, building, you know.
You should just, the one woman for free person, I thought, it's crazy.
Is that on the, on the deal, can we talk about that now, or we just wanna make each other?
Well, I got, here's a couple of questions. This is, now, your monthly income, this is for last fiscal year?
Yes.
So, the Outdoor Arena only got rented once this last year, the last 12 months?
That's for the High School Road, you're right?
Okay. And then, the grounds we had just, that's for, that's when they rent the whole facility? Or what's the grounds, how does that break out?
That would be... September, and that'd probably be like, I would say that'd probably be Kilpatrick Park.
Okay.
Um, Campers Foxes something.
There's, yeah, that must be like for the...
That, yeah, I'd need for someone to do on a, something.
Like a...
Yeah, okay. And it's like, for the amount of stuff we see going on over there, it's like we've only rented the Outdoor Arena once in the last year? Do we not charge for all these events?
A lot of events use, um, don't use the other, um, or they give multi-day, multi-day, multi-facility?
And that, and where is that on this sheet at?
It's not on there.
That's what concerns me, I'm not making accusations, that, there's a lot of stuff, seems like there's a lot of events going on out there, but it doesn't show any income on a lot of this stuff, you know? And we had, it shows we had one vendor all last year out there, that you charged a vendor fee for?
Well, when, when an event comes in, they have the, the option to take care of their vendors themselves, or have us take care of them.
Okay, if they take care of the vendors though, but they're still using your facility?
Yes, but they, that, it comes in with their, um, day drink.
But like, there's, the Outdoor Arena once for any of any vendors, but that's, there's, I'm kind of wrapping my, trying to wrap my head around the events that's going on out there and these things, which I want the fairgrounds to say, I mean, it's, it's an awesome facility, you know, we've got, it's great, but it's, it seems like it just, and there's no way it'll ever make money, but at least be somewhat sufficient. I'm bringing some money in, I mean, this is, what I'm seeing on your income here versus what's going on out there, you know, we say you just put a thousand dollars in a pricing machine.
Let me ask you this, is, um, like, say somebody comes, goes out there and just rides it over the Outdoor Arena, we don't even know it.
Yeah, probably there's like last, last week.
I mean, how, how you gonna charge for that unless you put a toll at each end of the fairgrounds to get them into the fair?
There's times, the last week, there was a Outdoor Arena, their lights and stuff were all on, was that a charge for?
Yes.
Last week, there was something going on?
Yeah, yes, that's through the Friends of Fair, um, the Friends of Fair donates everything they do there. We've done arrangement, they get the arena free, and they pay us for the lines.
Yeah, but you still maintain the arena, you have your employee go out there and prep the arena, you have your equipment out there, you know, it just, it's kind of like it's, we need, we need to slow up the money coming out, I mean, that's, I understand where you're going with that, it's how it works, but it's like, maybe we need to just look out for our own equipment and our own employee a little more for all the work that's going on out there, the money coming in is, you know, that's my concern, I, and I, there's no way it'll ever make money, don't even, I, I don't expect that, but it's like somewhere still, at least somewhat offset it, and some of the comments made to me is, how many, how many people use the fairgrounds? 700 people a year, different people at different times, different, would that be fair? Say 700 different people of this county?
Maybe.
Is that high or low?
That's probably five.
Okay.
For individuals coming in, sort of county residents that use it?
Yeah.
I'd probably put that 500.
That's less than 10% of our population.
Um, but when you put in the events and stuff, and the people come out and watch the events?
Yeah, the spectators, yeah.
Um, the less than county spectators coming in, I would put it in over, well over 1,000 people, um, so we get a benefit from the fairgrounds, the missing events.
And then I see all the, the other ripple effects going down for the business and other stuff in the county, that's, that's not overlooked, believe me. That was, that's some of my concerns, when I see this list here, it's like, the events that go on out there for what, mine that you're showing coming in. Is it, uh, you know, like, if you've got charged for water now, is that even shown on this income, where you charge for that? Is that just a...
For the water?
Yeah. The events happen with water truck to water cell?
No, I don't think that's, that's not, that's not an income, that's what we have to pay.
It shows as an expense, but...
Yeah.
They don't show income where it comes back in. See, you're writing it off as an expense, but there's no way where you're charging it back in to your income.
How does your vendor deal work, I guess, like, they rent it, they take care of the vendor, but if you have, what do you mean by you have to take care of the vendor?
So they have a, um, for the horse sale, for example, they rent the, well, they rent gate to gate, almost excluding the event center, um, so it's, it's there, that's basically their facility for the three days. Um, they have choice vendors coming in, they have a food truck that comes in, they have a homeless gentleman that comes in and sells other crafts, and a few other, I think they had two other vendors this year. They pay, uh, the horse sale individuals for their boots, that's just, we sell that as long as a package deal. Now, if a gentleman, if someone wants to come in, do, do the facility, say, I don't want to mess with vendors, but all are welcome, then if a vendor shows up, we take that, we charge that vendor and we collect the money. It'd be the same as if someone comes in, rents the event center for a, a trade fair. You're gonna have 30 different vendors in there, and that's how that person who's gonna rent the event center, who's hosting the, the trade fair off, that's how they're turning their profit.
So you're charging the gentleman, lady, whatever, that rents the facility that's gonna take their own vendors, and the person that rents the facility says, I don't want any vendors, you deal with them, are they getting the exact same rates? So we get free vendors, the county gets no, I, I, I mean, I don't see where, I guess I don't understand the whole process, like, like, if somebody, I mean, even if you're bringing in a rope and steer or something, and you're selling that product to the people who rode, that's a vendor, right? I mean, anybody turning a profit out there, it's probably... I mean, anybody turning a profit out there is probably a vendor.
Right.
So I guess
I'm just learning too.
Well, to follow their segments, we've actually talked about this before is, okay, so you don't make a profit. But the problem then becomes, is there an expense to the county to put on that event? Um, the water, the electric, everything that's produced out there, maybe you don't make a profit on it, but it's still costing one way or the other. You're grooming the, the arenas, your, your gravel and the roads, the maintenance guys out there doing the work. And unfortunately, people of course would rather have it for nothing. That's, that's, not that they're being, I mean, that's human nature, but you have to be able to, you have to be able to support the facility and maintain it and even improve it before it to continue.
Okay, yeah, it's just like when, when we tried to raise the rent on the Outdoor Arena, we got backlash.
I was at that meeting and, you know, and if you recall what I said to that gentleman because he donated that and he's like, well, we didn't use the power. Well, we can't put a coin machine on the lights and the bathroom
Exactly.
and, you know, turn the dial, it's still being charged. Um, I, I, I thanked him for his donation, which he did, but I totally agreed with your
Yeah.
I mean, you have to, it wasn't even that big of an increase. The increase is, I mean, I, I wish cars weren't a hundred thousand dollars for trucks nowadays, but they are.
They are, exactly.
So we have to kind of compensate for that. And I don't think anyone's asking you guys to, we know the work you put into it. We just want to make sure that it's, you're getting what you deserve to get to maintain what you have. If we're wrong, please don't.
You know, I can go back to, like, the gate to gate for the horse sale, what does that be charged?
Fifteen, if you're going gate to gate for the whole, everything out there is fifteen hundred dollars.
Free day?
Yes. If you take, you know, there's been a lot of times where we've had conflicts and this event wants a multi-facility rate, but there's also an event in the event center. Um, so a multi-facility, uh, multi-day event is twelve hundred dollars excluding the events. So the event center is three hundred bucks.
Oh, now I'm just going to use the horse sale for example. Okay, he rents that for fifteen hundred dollars. He brings vendors in, he brings five vendors in at five hundred bucks a piece. He just turned a thousand dollar profit at our expense with his vendors bringing them in. He just turned a thousand dollar profit at our expense with his vendors bringing them in. We still incurred all the spots of maintaining the facility and everything. They just showed a thousand dollar profit if they bought five vendors and five hundred bucks a piece. I'm just, I'm just grabbing the money, it's easy to figure out. See where, this is kind of where I'm, where I kind of go with this, like, these, we're, the county and resident people, this county taxpayers are dumping money into this facility and there are certain events that these people make money on. But the fairgrounds, you guys as a board, you're still ensuring all of the expenses. At other, at other people's profit and we're accruing expenses.
And I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I do feel, and I think some of the people on the west side of West County feel it's kind of a playground for people to live around this area. I mean, and for an Outdoor Arena that got used once last year and we're wanting to put a hundred thousand dollars into a wall? I mean, that's unbelievable to me. Twelve hundred dollars we got for last year's usage of it? I don't know. I mean, that's a pretty incredible amount of money to reinvest into.
And around the area, if you look, and if you guys disagree, tell me, but a lot of these event centers are making sure that outside stuff is not even brought in. You have to buy from that to make up the difference. Now, I'm not saying we should do that, like, but they can't bring in a cooler, but for example, if you have, if you're supplying the beer or you're supplying the soda and you're supplying those things, it's almost counterproductive to allow it to come in when they can, I mean, it's going to make you money. Um, so, and a lot of these facilities and these stadiums, you're not allowed to bring that in at all.
Are those private entities though or do they count?
Even the fair, uh, the demolition derby over there that they had recently, you weren't allowed to bring in your, your own stuff, your own alcohol, your own coolers.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a public, yeah. I mean, that's a public thing and I'm not saying, I'm just throwing ideas at you. You guys work extremely hard, but um, that's, I agree. I mean, we were talking about it this morning, that wall commissioner Todd, have you looked at it lately? It hasn't really deteriorated that much. Why not just grade it, you know, slope it down and let what's standing stand and be done with it? Because even through those big torrential rains we had, we haven't seen much deterioration since it's come down.
Yeah, well, I think it's going to be a, a safety issue because they run the, some horse events on the track right in front of the grandstand. There's going to be kids running all over the place. The rock wall kind of keeps them up there next to the grandstands. If you slope it down, the horses can go up that way. Well, they sometimes do anyway, because in the past, I've been out there forever. But I mean, in the past, those, some horses jumped that, that rock wall. You know, I mean, and I guarantee you, uh, the community will bet if you bet.
And in the last week, I have
And they will.
Talked to, um, you know, as a, as a fair board member, it's, it's quite easy to keep the fairgrounds in order of the citizens in the county. Makes me happy with fairgrounds. And a lot of the guys who've been, been around a lot, who have dealings with the fairgrounds, um, I asked them about the rock wall. What, you know, what would you like to see working on it? Um, and I offered, you know, I gave them the explanation, maybe just slope it and make it a, you know, present it in a, in a nice way, a grassy, I can envision it. Um, my, my first thing is, is the rain, when it does get rain, that track's going to get surrounded. And it, the track already, doesn't take a lot of load. But, um, I talked to, I could say five people, out of the five people I really talked to, three of them, the first, first thing they said was, the people are going to be pissed. That rock, rock wall's going to be part of it forever. Um, looking into, you know, the way we've talked about it and stuff of, of making it, making sure it stays, making sure the integrity of it, like the grandstands and the, the cane wall aspect of it stays, you know, looking at options, big blocks, little blocks, what we can do with the old rocks. Um, you know, it's it's, it's an issue, but, and that, there was a mishap on, I mean, the high school rodeo uses the outdoor, uh, where we can exclusively. Um, but then, you know, we've got other usages which come at fair time, a whole entire fair time. We're in, we're on the track, we're in the outdoor. Um, outside of fair, you have, this year you have, you know, the, the upcoming generation looking to put events on are looking to go outdoor. Um, and then as well as uh, junior rodeo during the fair, I guess, high school rodeo, uh, you know, it's, you know, we don't have a whole lot of people use the outdoor to ride in the summertime, but our biggest ticket for arenas is the arena.
I just have a question on the, on the NIAX deposits. So that, that money goes into our general fund when it comes in?
If it's on their sheet that they bring up here.
So I'm, I'm curious, do you know what your, your utilities were for the year, for the whole, for the whole facility, not just the arena?
Utilities was, um, whole utilities was, um, before I asked you for the five thousand dollars, it was thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Oh, there it is. So that's, that's all utilities?
Yes.
That's not just electricity? You know, um, to me, that, that money should be going either back into their budget to pay utilities. Because people are, I realize that's income, but it's also people are paying for, for electricity essentially. And to me, it would help their budget if that money went towards their electricity.
Well, the total revenue doesn't even equal the amount of utilities.
Yeah, but it would, it would help.
So every time they bring that money and we have to have a budget because it will affect our budget? So every month they recheck up, we have to do a budget check.
So
Which I mean, we can.
Like at the end of the year, can we, can we credit that back in their budget or?
Well, I
I mean, we can, but
We'll do it on a quarterly basis? Wouldn't you get that back, you know?
Pull it back out of the general fund quarterly?
It would just track, it would track that this was by citizens to go to electricity, then you're using it for electricity. It seems like we want to track that.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we do the budget, you're looking at last year's total and then you're comparing what they ask for as opposed to what they recommend. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't be starting with the last year's total.
I do.
So
I, so when I look at the budget, I mean, fiscal year twenty-four, what they have spent is what we go off of. And then they have overspent, then I add more in more. But the, um, but then into the general fund and we take it out, putting it in. I mean, if that's what you're having to do, pull it back out of the general fund and put it in quarterly.
I'm just thinking about us tracking it better, I guess. And then it would be on, on you guys on your, your book keeping in to also start tracking like the table costs and stuff.
I, I think it should be said that in case it's misunderstood, we would love to see you be able to handle your own affairs. And that's the direction we want to work towards. But we, we also got ourselves into a buying before, which is why, that, which isn't your fault.
Thousand that people are getting aboard.
Absolutely.
I mean, we just threw the mess up on this, the Outdoor Arena showing, being a multi-day facility. Um, this is kind of a rough deal, but to put this all together, but since, especially since Francis came on, we've been as transparent as we can be. You guys have been very, so I know it's been six, seven months. Um, kind of a short term, but
If it's over a month, it really is.
I mean, I, I'm giving My point to you, given more information than we've gotten, and that's commendable.
Oh, and like speaking to the board, I mean, wouldn't it simplify everything? If we just, if we took that over the checkbooks and everything, I mean, we wouldn't have, because right now as it sits and might as well put us down for every meeting and having a budget judgment and, I mean
But the other side of the coin is, is I guess we want to make sure you guys understand what would you do, to use commissioner Wagner's point, if you're giving those things, uh, and you're losing money on them each time at the end of the year, whether you hold the checkbook or we do, you're still going to need mu- money with the way it is. So I guess we want to figure out how to help you guys make sure that you have the money that you need. Because we're just going to be right back in the same boat if you have to come back at the end of the year and go, hey, we don't have any money. The bill still has to be paid. Somebody's got to pick up the tab, you see what I'm saying? So we, that's what we want to try to help with is, is figure out how we prevent that. Am I wrong?
Yeah, we, we, my goal, I mean, I, I want to, well, I'd like to get you guys set up for success. You know, I don't want you to come in here and just crash and burn. So, you know, and it's
This is a start.
Yeah. So So the big question today is getting money, extra money put in your budget for our budget?
Well, what I would like to see, this is, this, I would like to see fourteen thousand dollars put into more repairs and maintenance. That's what we were able to work with last year after we came in and did the budget adjustment, or the line item adjustment out of itself. If we can possibly do that, then I think we could, if you let us keep some of our income, that would be great also. Or, or all of it, so we can turn this around to where we're making more money.
My question to the board is, is if we do that, do we let them start with a clean slate and give them the opportunity to use their money to give them that money? Or do we wait longer, give them the money and see where it goes? I, I guess that's, we're, I'm a little unclear on what we do. I mean, at some point, we have to, so last night, we got to understand that they didn't create the mess, but there was one and we, we hopefully will have it cleaned up. Go ahead, commissioner.
Can you bring in a sheet that says what fourteen thousand dollars will go to? And then, then we can have it listed out, um, to allocate that funding? If we do it out of the ARPA funds or something, then we know where it went. And then you guys can verify that it's been done, once it's been done and we know that the money isn't going, we're not saying you're going to do it or something else with it, but people have in the past.
So this, this is a, a man's sheet, we need to get this all together. This is all our repairs and maintenance for the last fiscal. It goes up to twelve thousand, twelve thousand forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
And that's just every day, repairs and maintenance, oil, grease, all that.
And our, our fuels in here.
Yeah, the fuel is the biggie.
Well, and I like the commissioner Todd's idea, that's what we talked about with the repairs. You bring the estimate and then here's the money for it. But if we did that, you guys break it down, not, it's not a trust, it's a trust to verify that that fourteen thousand's going to repairs and maintenance and you guys are taking that out of your bucket list to be repaired. Now, obviously repairs are always ongoing, you repair something and, you know, a month later, something else breaks. But, um, that's, I think, I mean, that's a pretty good idea to kind of put some confidence in the board, I think. Just say, we know these things are being handled.
Right. And just kind of working with Becky on this. So if, we've got to have a resolution adopt the budget coming up here. So if we adopt the budget as it was presented to you guys and then come through with an additional fourteen thousand out of the ARPA funds to do all your, your, the chief of maintenance.
How are we going to do that? Like say we need to go, uh, uh, the toilets grew up. We don't, we can't predict that. Say they put, the one of the toilet, I think, the toilet, they're automatic flushes. So how are you going to, how are you going to?
But if it's in your account, you're, you get it taken care of and then you're turning it into an invoice to say, or on that list that the commissioner's talking about, toilet repair on such and such a date was a thousand dollars. Uh, hopefully it's not that, but I'm just using that as a point on there. And at the end of the year, you have a total for where that fourteen thousand went. See what I'm saying? Just like you have in that file there.
Right.
If you broke it down into a list and line itemed it, you'd have a list of equaling twelve thousand, which, whatever you said. And that's what I think commissioner Todd's asking for.
Plus you could come from more. At the end of the day, we've spent it and this is what we spent it on and then there wouldn't be a question of how did you spend it all?
Wouldn't that just be in the building and grounds anyway? I mean, this is where it's getting very confusing because they need, they want money for small repairs and for, a lot of it's for your equipment and your fuel. So that isn't building grounds, but everything that has to do with, the building and grounds comes back to us and we pay for it.
But I, I just
So that's really, it's, it gets, well, it gets very confusing because I understand what you need is for those small things like
Oil, grease?
Grease, things like that. You need, you need to have money available to do those things and to me, uh, if, if we're going to trust them to do it. we're going to trust them to do it, you should be able to give them the money. Because when they need grease, they need grease. They shouldn't have to come back to us and say, boy, we really need that. That's just ridiculous.
I agree with that.
This, this makes sure, we've kind of set ourselves up and set them, so, we've set them up to fail. This, this makes sure, we've kind of set ourselves up and set them, so, we've set them up to fail by what, having us pay part of their bills. They have to bring their bills into us. They're not really responsible for their own budget. And a lot of things, to me, it looks like a lot of things get confused and just populated in that process. To me, we either should do it all, or they should do it all. But having us do half of it and them do half of it really confuses issues.
But it's the exact same way that the airport does theirs, and there's absolutely no problem with airports for doing that.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, Malo has no issues either, but I, I don't know that that's their fault, but I mean, there's different things going on. I, I agree that we need to take a leap of faith, we fix the, well, we hope that we fix with the board problems and give them the opportunity, because it does get confusing. I get confused just listening to it.
It's getting confusing. Because we don't know what we need.
Problem, the difference is, like with Malo, you've got apples and oranges, or even airports to some extent, because here, you've got a money pit, there, you've got a money generating entity, and this, uh, I'm going to tell you, you think people are going to be pissed, is that rock wall is going to be more pissed with the fairgrounds is shut down because the money isn't there, man. I mean, you take $100,000, that, to me, that, unless it's more justified, they can use the indoor part of that, or the fenced-in part of that outdoor arena. They don't need to be racing horses for $100,000 a year to return, generate $1,200 bucks.
Well, what, my idea, this is just an idea, is that instead of, um, why don't we do a moneymaker for the rock wall?
Yeah, like a fill-the-boot kind of deal. If you guys can generate 50% of it, then maybe we can figure out.
Yeah, see, that, that's what, because I know, I know people, I haven't asked people, but I know people will donate a block or two.
And that's what I suggest, yeah. That's where I'm about. Donate, uh, you know, ask your 4-H families and people, you know, buy a $100 block. And if, even if we got half of it, three quarters of it, four...
And if people want to donate money, where are we going to put the money? See, that's why I want a building down market.
Um, the other thing we brought up, which I would, I would request that you guys would consider is, is these events, and, and I think Commissioner Wagner and, and Commissioner Board might agree with me on this. When mini-sprints, for example, were there, it was a great deal, because, uh, you know, one of the locals put it on, and he did a great job with it. But, I mean, on some nights, those stands were packed, and maybe in that sense, some of that stand, the attendance revenue should have gone to...
The fairgrounds.
The fairgrounds, uh, per event. Because some of them, I mean, they're packed. I, I don't know, I'm not sitting here going to have the magic crystal ball, but I'm saying that might be something that you look at on a, on a attendance basis, because, you know, if they're allowed to bring in their own vendors, maybe, how do we know that that person isn't getting a percentage from the vendors they're bringing in to their event while they're, you're still taking care of the grounds, you're still mowing, you're still, you know, cleaning up the, the electricity, the water, all those things? I'm not saying that's happening, I'm just saying, I would request that you guys consider that, and, because I was not opposed to what you did with your arena, at all. I thought you did good, and it doesn't make sense to, like he said, why didn't you use the lights in the bathroom? We didn't go in there. Well...
Or you use the lights.
You use the lights.
I'm sorry, you do. And, you know, with the events that do that, that those people charge, you charge for our PM days, right?
Mm-hmm.
They do that to help them pay for their electric, not electricity, for their insurance that they have to have. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have to carry an insurance for that.
But, I mean, that's kind of why you charge to get in to offset that cost.
I think some of the problem too is a lot of constituents have, I've had them come up to me and say, well, that ground was donated to the county, so it should be, but it's still donated, but there's a cost...
For that.
For that ground. I mean, I, I get it was donated, and I'm grateful for it, and it's a great facility, but it doesn't cost nothing to operate.
There's a lot of, um, citizens that was donated, uh, at the county taxes, that's kind of grounds, it's mine, free to ride.
Exactly, and, and...
Unless, like, what we have to set up now, if you want to go indoor arena right now, or the outdoor arena, and just ride, not turn the switch on, not do anything, it is free. You can go in there and ride, whatever. You turn the lights on, you want to reserve it, you want to say, that's my arena to ride in, you pay for that. It's, you know...
But even on those free rides, they go in and use your arena, and you have to go back in there and groom it for the next group or the person that does rent it, so there's a cost.
Yes, there is a cost.
We have to restructure.
Anyway, what's the pleasure of the board? What would you like to do?
Well, I have a question regarding what Newt said. Uh, we took it out of ARPA funds to do these small repairs that you like, a list first. I don't, realistically, I'm not sure they can even give us a list first, since it's covering, uh, gas and oil and things like that, but if, I think we should go ahead. They, they said they get, they used $12,000 last year, but you realize, you have more expenses, probably a higher expenses this year. I recommend we go ahead and, and put that in their budget, or give them the money to do those repairs, and then as they do the repairs, they can bring us in a list of the things that get that money. Would you agree to that?
Yeah. And this step also is, it's a servo issue, the, the table items issue, you know, like we said last night, you know? So the better we do on table costs and stuff, the worse, you know, the worse our budget is, because that whole scenario, um, so that, that's in there as well. So that's kind of, you know, that's a reason, they came up to $12,000, that's $14,000.
So perhaps quarterly, we can look at their NISs and their things like your table items, things like that, that they, they pay for, for people, you know, reimburse them?
I don't think you're requesting reasonable, I mean, just coming in, even if it's quarterly with a report, like, we get our reports that say maintenance used so far, what was, I mean, that's not, I don't think that's too much to ask. There's no way you can predict it, but go ahead, Commissioner.
I think just keep a line item, and then, I mean, it'd be as easy as everything else you'd be on there. It wouldn't be any problem, keep a line item on the funds, and we accept the current budget here shortly, and then after the budget, so we transfer it to market. I mean, would that be an issue, maybe?
After the budget?
Yeah.
At the next meeting, have a, um, resolution prepared to $14,000 out of the ARPA and to their repair maintenance for the $14,000. That's fair.
But I think with this in mind, I mean, if this happens again, our current, not you in general, but for the county fair in general, and speaking of our budget, I mean, we're headed on the wrong trajectory, I mean, it's going to affect you folks, you folks.
Right.
$100,000 is starting to become a really serious number. I mean, $15,000.
If we can even come up with three quarters of it, you know, just take the rock wall or, or if we could...
Or fix 20 feet of it.
Or even that whole thing. If we, you know, because I've got a feeling that there's people out there that will donate all the rock.
No, just for my own clarity, we're, we're not saying that for, at least, I'm not saying, there's no way you're going to be able to repair that wall with that money, but, I mean, you could do it in sections, if, if, just, like I said, the, what I've seen out there, it's not really deteriorating very much, and maybe you're doing it in sections that satisfies the people that will get ticked off if it's not backed up. You know, like you said, do it in sections.
Of the $14,000, what?
Yeah, that would be a different, I can't, this...
$10,000.
Um, last year, so, like, with the last fiscal year, not this one, that we're just leaving, um, you know, we, we also had an employee missing, so we, we took money out of it for the repairs and maintenance side too, so there is kind of a pattern where we're short on money for repair maintenance. We don't, I didn't bring in the, the stuff in from last fiscal year, but, you know, last, we had $7,000, stole some out of the salary and stuff, we had stuff moving around throughout to cover this stuff, so it is kind of a...
So that, that $14,000 should be used on equipment. You shouldn't use it to fix anything with the rock wall, that's correct.
No, no, that was, we know that.
Yeah, no, the rock wall is not completely different issue. This is, this $14,000 is for table costs, for, uh, broken bolts, for, um, broken toilets, doors.
Everyday, you know?
Dinner, maintenance.
Fuel, um, maintenance and oil filters.
Oil, yeah, oil and...
That's, that's...
Filters.
The rock wall is a totally different...
And the, and the, with the tractor, the big stuff.
Yeah, and Bear's right, I mean, that's tied to the building and grounds.
Right.
Those are different discussions we need to have.
The toilets would be the same, building grounds, so you guys just keep in mind, if it took to the buildings, it's our responsibility.
I've got a question. If we, um, the, my main concern is the event center. It leaks in the kitchen. It kind of, I mean, when it rains, it leaks. There's puddles all over the kitchen. We need to get that roof fixed. Could that come out of the ARPA fund? I mean, for that, because I know we gave you guys an estimate for that roof.
Well, I, I hope what the board would say is, first, we need to know what's wrong with roof, so we need an estimate.
Well, we did, we gave you one.
For that, yes.
We have got, we need the...
The door repair, the kitchen door, there's a big kitchen door, um, it's unusable right now, um, so in the meeting, we talked about it, it's a kind of fire hazard. There is two exits still, um, the big door, uh, is unusable, the roof leaks, um, we've all, we've brought in estimates for that, I think, last October, November.
You emailed it to Becky. I know, yeah, I know, that's what I'm thinking of. You could reemail that, I'm sure it's probably not valid still, but then, I mean, a roof leak is pretty a major deal, but...
Okay, um, the estimate, that, what I understand, I didn't really look at it, but the estimate that we have is just a carpet. And that's not, in my opinion, that's not...
It's a band-aid.
Because it's just a band-aid, and it's going to happen again. What needs to happen is an incentive on it because of puddles when the, the...
Seven. And again, that, we'll have to get a re, an estimate anyway.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Because of where we're at, and, all right, but...
But that, that's, that was my main goal, is to try to get that fixed.
And this sheet here, that should be our priority, because that's 35% of your income of that building. And that's good to have it this way, because that's where we need to focus on getting that fixed, because that's the biggest portion of your income.
Yeah. So that's why, that's why I brought it up.
I do have a question. Uh, you mentioned the endowment fund, where are we on that? Did we...
The endowment fund?
Did you start a checking account?
No, I just put the, the, the 22. You guys told us to go ahead and put it in our, our pair account.
But you're, but you're splitting it out into a separate one?
No. I have nothing to do with it, but you guys told them to just put it in there. Just put it in our checking, checking. It's on that sheet, our, our...
You just keep it, you just keep it...
As a line...
As a line item.
On your end, as a line item. Okay, that's, okay, that's...
That, that line item there and...
A new line item was in there somewhere, but I couldn't remember.
It shows who, who donated it.
Okay.
What it's for, and what we're using, I mean, what we're taking out of it as we go.
Okay.
And another thing that I want to point out on that sheet is that $699, that $700, you can barely see it, I'm sorry, that's un, the uncleared transactions, that is from last year's premium checks. And we're going to have to keep that money in our account, because the bank will let those checks go through no matter what, what bank they are. I'm sorry, but, because I'll give you an example. We had a, had a judge two years ago just cashed her check this year, and then bank let it go through.
And that checks were like, for a certain amount of time.
Supposed to be.
They're supposed to be. After six months, they're supposed to be, but anybody that, and they're, and the tellers at our local bank that, um, that they are trained to look at the date, but they do not. So we have a problem there. And no, after 90 days, they will hash it anyway. I, I called the bank and asked them. It doesn't matter. And, you know, you would think it does, but what we're going to do this here with our premium checks, we're going to sit, we're going to do a letter to them and say, this is voided after this date, and then we can put that money back into our pair account. And, because that's the only way we can do it.
So if we're all in agreement, we're going to, we'll approve the budget as it sits today, and then we'll put it back on the agenda to correct and add money from the ARPA funds, and we'll do, Becky will do a resolution for us to do that, and then we'll go from there. As far as, how does the board feel about, are we, are we going to continue to split these bills? Are we going to let them, or we're not going to decide that now, or should we put it on the next meeting again, uh, when we have that money, to see if we want to let them start with a cold slate and begin managing them? It's clearly up to the board.
I've got a question. On that, if you actually give us our money back, are we going to have to have more for the federal, I mean, that, I think, the payroll costs, like, social security, Medicare, federal, workman's comp? Yeah. What you want.
Yeah, those things are, yeah, that is an issue.
So...
So why don't, why don't we do this, let's, let's get through this. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we'll talk about that again, unless somebody has any other ideas about that, but that is an issue.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
So, so why don't, why don't we do this, let's, let's get through this. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and then we'll talk about that again, unless somebody has any other ideas about that, but that is an issue that we're going to have to cross.
Can you figure those numbers? About me?
It may not be financially smart for us to do that part of it, I don't, I don't...
Would it be a problem if the payroll went through county, and then the rest of it on them? Would that be a problem for your office?
I don't know, I'll have to talk to Paul.
You know, that way, that way, you guys don't have to deal with all the, with all that stuff, all that insurance. That way, it would...
The extension agent has a county employee, one, two, three, four.
But they're under, everything is under us.
Something that way, it might make it easier for you guys, that way, if, if all the payroll stuff stayed here, then...
That would have been great. Then I didn't, wouldn't have to do it.
No, and I mean, that might, that would alleviate a lot of problems too on the credit end.
So Becky will get with Paul, and hopefully, she's not too slammed, and by the next meeting, we'll just put it back on the agenda.
Do you guys go actually in the afternoon on Tuesday? Because I, I take the day off every time I have to come here.
Not you, Lloyd, or Paul.
What's on the... Because it's really kind of, I mean...
Yeah, I know.
It's a little hard.
All right, so we have a plan, I don't want to cut you short, but we got to kind of stick to the agenda here. And hopefully you guys are satisfied with, I think we've made some progress. And I don't want you guys to think, again, if this board doesn't have confidence and understand the hard work you put in... And I don't want you guys to think, again, if this board doesn't have confidence and understand the hard work you put in, just understand we've also been dealing with the frustrations that you have over a period of time, and we're just trying to make sure that we, to quote Mr. Wagner, set you up for success.
Appreciate it, thank you guys.
Fran, can you take like a twenty minute, I mean, most of this time you're in here, it's fifteen minutes, can you do like a twenty minute break during work and zoom in?
I can probably, um, do it through the, because, yeah, I can be late for work, because it's kind of a, it's my own schedule, but, I mean, you know, I did it up and up, and if it was up in and up enough, then I can, because I work at the post office at work. So, it's like, but I can just stop what I'm doing and call him if we need.
That makes more easier for you.
Yeah, it would. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to come in and do it. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Could you state your name for, for the, these people on that event?
Absolutely.
Okay.
There you go. Um, hi everyone, my name is Christy Pearl, this is my husband Joe. Just wanted to start off by saying thank you, um, Mr. Taylor, Chairman, and obviously County Commissioners for letting this panel speak today. Um, this is, uh, and following up from your guys' County Commissioner meeting that you had on, uh, June eighteenth, when it was brought up about the, um, dogs at large and Osage, and kind of that's, you know, went on about the vicious dog, um, statute. And so, I just have something I wanted to present to you guys and let you know it concerns. Um, so dear Weston County Commissioners, I am here today to bring to your attention a matter of significant concern regarding the enforcement of the vicious dog Wyoming statute eleven dash thirty-one dash three oh one within our community. As a resident of Weston County, I have observed a troubling trend where the current statute is not being adequately enforced, leading to a potential risk for public safety and community well-being in our neighborhood area. The specific statute in question, eleven dash thirty-one dash three oh one, outlines regulations meant for safeguard our community from incidents involving vicious dogs. Unfortunately, there have been several instances where the regulation has not been enforced effectively. The lapse in enforcement has resulted in residents being attacked or harassed by vicious dogs, residents not feeling safe to take a walk with their family on public county roads as if vicious dogs are outside, kids, um, not being able to run, walk, or ride their bikes by certain areas if they are attacked or chased by vicious dogs, fear of our safety from being outside our home with vicious dogs running around in neighborhoods slash county. The impact of the issue extends beyond more inefficiency of, or the inconvenience of families unable to walk term on the public road, but comes down to the safety and posing real threats to the safety of residents and their pets. I was a victim of the vicious dog attack and was attacked by four dogs in our neighborhood. Deputy Haynes responded to our nine one one call, and he enforced the vicious dog statute. I was very fortunate that Deputy Haynes did cite the owner and dogs were impounded. However, since their return, the last two years have been unsafe for residents in their housing area. Since then, not only myself and my family, but other neighborhood members have been victims of vicious attacks and harassing dogs. When, and when nine one one is called, no citation is given. I'm not even sure if the vicious dog owners are talked to. I propose rigorous enforcement of this statute concerning vicious dogs. It is critical that dog owners who repeatedly violate these regulations are cited promptly. When community residents like myself call for reporting a vicious dog attack, it is a concern, and we feel actions need to be taken. I feel there's no accountability for these dog owners. I understand that the Sheriff's Department might not have the bandwidth to be called for dog at large, but when it comes to attacking, harassing, or threatening any person or persons, these dog owners need to be cited in a timely manner. In support of my concerns, I have enclosed the deputy report for my dog attack, a copy of the Wyoming State Statute eleven thirty-one dash three oh one, and letters of concern from residents around the housing area. I have presented these letters to Sheriff Colbert, who was to send these to the county attorney. It's been two years from the attack, so I don't remember exactly who I sent the letters to. I do know I had a phone conversation with the county attorney and met with the sheriff Colbert, expressing to them my concern about the safety of the dogs that attacked me. When I heard that the vicious dog statute was going to be reviewed by our county attorney, I wanted to share with you all this information. I respect the request that the Weston County Commissioners and county attorney did this matter serious consideration, that this is a safety concern and should not be taken lightly. I would like to be informed of the resolution of this vicious dog by someone in the county, example, Commissioner, Member, Sheriff, or County Attorney. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or would like to discuss this matter further. Thank you for your attention regarding this important issue to our family.
Michael might be the best to speak on this, but the resolution that we were, um, sitting under, do you folks live, where do you folks live, I guess?
In the Paints Hills district.
Okay, so, so the problem with that resolution, it was pretty vague. And by no means of us getting rid of that resolution did it have any effect on the current law or the sheriffs, our want for the sheriff to strictly enforce the current laws and statutes in place. So I, I don't think the board took any steps to slow or try to hinder the responsibility of our Sheriff's Department in dealing with vicious dogs and/or their owners. And I, and I hope that every instance is taken seriously by them. I understand that things slipped through the cracks. It happens. We have people released, OR, that go back out into the community that have done bad things, and they continue to do bad things, and they're, they're being, some of our police officers know, you know, because they're, I mean, things just slipped and cracked, so I, I think, if Michael has anything to add, I, it wasn't, what we did will have zero effect on Colbert's, Mr. Colbert's ability to enforce the, the current law.
Yeah, no, that, that, um, resolution was completely unrelated to the state statute. And I can circle back around with Sheriff Colbert and revisit this again with him and see what's going on, you know, what's going on. I, I just don't know what kind of coverage he has for out there. You know, you see deputies coming out every once in a while, but, yeah, I don't know where they're covering. Now they have to cover up then, so that probably takes some of their coverage down here away as well. But I will circle back around with Sheriff Colbert and just talk to him about this.
I have a question.
Is it, you go first.
Is it a continuing problem, like, right now, daily, all the time?
Yep.
And that was part of my question, it's, it's almost, are these the same dogs?
Yes.
Correct, okay, because I'm sure you guys are aware, my wife and I own the house up on Paints Hills. And, you know, I'm just trying to figure out if it's the same dogs, and if it is the same dogs, and it's hard to, we need to correct the behavior of the owners to those dogs. If it's different dogs, it's really hard to, you know, they're all over the place, but I, it sounds like these are the same dogs.
They are.
In looking down through the letters, it looks, I'm assuming that most of these incidences have been off the property of the dog owner.
Correct.
Pretty much all on.
Well, on county road.
Kid would drive, so everybody's clear on where we're talking about.
Or they will come into people's property. Home or something, I guess, like, more.
If they're all the, if they're all the owner's property, that puts.
Yep.
And it should be, or be able to be forced in, when it's all, when it's all owner's property.
I even had incidents where I was walking with my dog, went clear on the outside of county road into the bar ditch to be very avoiding of the homeowners resident, and dogs come out, and luckily there was a deputy who was driving by, and said, will you just watch me walk? And watch this happen. And sure enough, those dogs came out, and that deputy pulled in, sprayed him with pepper spray, but I don't think there was any cited or anything. And I mean, it's a, it's a constant, like, are they gonna be out today, are we gonna have to deal with this? I mean, they'll jump the county, um, there's a, a cattle guard, and they'll jump that cattle guard and go into the state land, and, you know, there's people who have cows out there, um, yes, this is definitely a, a daily occurrence.
Have you tried talking to the owners?
So, I do want to comment, uh, on that specifically, and I want to make sure everybody knows, we understand that we're in a very large county, not very populated, so the enforcement and people to be able to watch this, it's spread thin throughout the whole county. I want to make sure everybody knows, we understand that. Um, will you ask that question more in time, because I did have a comment on that, that's.
Well, I mean, these are, I'm assuming neighbors, uh, and how do they respond to the?
So, we are slightly fearful of approaching, it is a residence that you see a lot of police presence at. Um, retaliation is, uh, is a fear of mine for my family's protection. Um, I've never really had any confrontation with them, my wife has at one time walking down the road. I'm just worried about that, you know, working a job, no, not always home, um.
And we are where, like, we would go and approach, I mean, we have neighbors for other things, you know, anyway, but this was just one of those things.
Trying to weigh the outcome of it, and, and to understand, you know, it's that in-between area of being in town, being able to go knock on a neighbor's door, or being out of town to where people feel like it's the counties, and, I mean, it's, it's uncomfortable to approach a house that you gotta walk down a private drive into to approach somebody.
Totally understand, I, only reason why I ask is like, neighbors, you know, we always have neighbors, and we say, hey, uh, hopefully you can resolve issues, but those kind of things, but if it's an ongoing problem with the same dogs, then I would kind of follow suit with what Mr. Todd said, and we, the sheriff needs to follow through, and there's obviously documented records, so citation or, or some type of penalty should be warranted at this point, I would think.
Yeah, that's something we have to talk to Sheriff Colbert about, I don't know in particulars, uh, what his officers are doing on this.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for him, I don't, he, he's not here, but I don't think that he would help you with that.
And it's, it's a lot, you know, and we've been dealing with it, when you guys brought up, um, you read in the paper about, obviously I know it was more of the dog at large, but, you know, the statute was brought up as a can, and I, I just, I want the Commissioners to understand, this is an issue, you know, um, I mean.
It's a weekly affair.
Yeah.
Whether they're chasing cars.
Right, Commissioner. Michael, um, minus a declaration by County, Board of County Commissioners, this public nuisance notice, is that, I mean, I assume some of this, any animal attacking any person still applies by law, I mean, we shouldn't have to designate a running at large, should we, to still protect the citizens in general?
Thank you for vicious animals, vicious dogs, that statute, I was.
The, the only reason I ask, it just says, the very first bullet, and it's, a Board of County Commissioners may declare the running of our, of public nuisance, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, then that's what that.
Upon the declaration of public nuisance, the county sheriff may dispose of.
I think that's under the authority that resolution again, as rescinded was, but the enforceability of those and how to make that happen is different than the vicious dogs.
I think that's why that resolution was created, was because of that mole, it's like.
We'd have to have a long discussion about that nuisance resolution and making it, so if you did, if you guys did want to do something like that, enforceable, because a little fuzzy on how that is gonna be enforced.
Well, I think that's, and I understand that. It's hit with the sheriff, and, you know, the, the times that they respond, they do the job, but I just, I don't think there's any accountability for some of the dog owners, because I don't think, I just don't think there is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that resolution was a warm, fuzzy feeling, but it had no teeth, is the bottom line. It, it's, it's intended, I think, was to have some teeth to enforce, but there was nothing enforceable in that resolution. The way it was, the way it was built, it was like, you got a warm, fuzzy feeling, but you can't do nothing with it, so.
I think we should maybe add it to the next agenda, and, and maybe have Mr. Colbert in here, not to discuss the individual or the dogs in question, but the statue and his understanding of what he's comfortable with. Unless Mr. Stolkin's interested in visiting privately and maybe reporting back to us on that, those regards, I just, bothers me is, to, to see that, that declaration in there, I, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, if you get bit by a dog, you're gonna be liable, I don't care whether or not, just, I guess, I don't know.
Well, I'd be concerned, I would wonder is, is if there has been citations given. I, I don't, I know you guys said that there hasn't, but we don't know for sure without Brian, but if there has, then it would seem like it elevated to the next level, you know.
Maybe we can put in with Brian a little bit, and ensure that he's comfortable with the current statute, since they sit, and his enforcement, ability to enforce the law, um, as it's written, without our needing to have that declaration.
And I'd be happy to, I mean, I'm pretty, almost passionate about it, but it is.
I'd be, yeah, I'd be.
I just wanted to come for a walk, and, or my kid rides bike, and, uh.
Well, we'll put it on the next agenda, and welcome to come back on that, and, and I'm assuming that, Michael, you're gonna follow up with him and find where we are with it, so that we can.
Yeah, if you need.
Know where we're at.
Just reach out to us, so, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
He's here.
Welcome. Hi Ralph.
Hi Ralph.
Mr. Taylor.
Hi.
Hi Ralph. Good to see you.
Michael. Could you state your name for the microphone, so people on the. For the people on the microphone.
Okay.
Look in there. Look into the microphone, or?
You can say it right there.
Okay.
Ralph Shuck is my name.
Yes, sir. I need you to help.
Well, I bought some property, I'm just.
No, you're fine.
I bought some property fifteen years ago, and was told where the boundary were, was, and the fence was on the boundary line. Well, this guy from out of state came in and bought some property, joined in it, and had a survey. The survey is always a different thing, what we were always told. We were told it's surveyed and, and where the property lines were. So, I've tried to find out from many sources, what I do next. I mean, I've got a warrant deed, which I can give each one of you. If I need to survey it again, then my question is, okay, so I survey it again, he surveys it again, how many times are we gonna do this? I mean, I, I have a warrant deed, is, is that, is that what we're gonna go by, or?
Well, I mean, the assessor would be in the property lines, right, or, or what the deed says, I would think is what you.
Yeah, I have a, I have a deed.
I mean, I'm, that's not my expertise, is there any other Commissioner that could speak on that?
Sometimes surveyors get things wrong, too.
I'm sorry, can I?
It, it, sometimes surveyors get things wrong, too, so, I mean, I'm not saying this case is an instance of that, but sometimes, things get. So, I mean, I'm not saying this case is an instance of that, but sometimes things get either...
I've been there.
And it may be not the surveyor. I've been in a meeting with you where things have been wrong before in the past. And we, you know, you know what I'm referring to, I assume. So, people make mistakes, whether it's between the surveyor and the assessor's office or the title company. So, I think your best bet is probably, if that, is recent survey, how long ago was it?
I'm sorry?
How long ago was the most recent survey?
Well, they just surveyed it like two months ago. And previous to that, it was many years.
And you've been paying, and I assume that this isn't in favor on your, on your land?
No, it's way off.
And it, I would have a discussion maybe with the assessor. Have you been paying taxes on the property that's surveying correctly? I mean, you have various things you need to find out. Unfortunately, that's where I stop with my knowledge on it. I don't know, I mean, I would assume the surveys that's been done is probably correct now. I, that's my assumption, but I don't know what step you follow now. I mean, whether you want it, what, what do you want to have happen?
I want, I want to own the property I thought I owned, that I paid for fifteen years ago.
Well, you've been down this road before, haven't you, Mr. Shuck?
Yeah, yeah.
I just think, um, this is not necessarily a county issue, but a civil issue between you and the other owner. So, you're gonna probably have to try to work at it, get out with him. I don't think there's really anything the county can really do about it. I think it's a personal and civil issue between you and him. So, I don't know if there's really anything you can do. I'll take them this.
Just a suggestion, Ralph, one thing that you might do, we had something like this personally, is to go to a title company and have them do a title search to go all the way back to the beginning of the property to make sure that the legal description has stayed the same.
Arnold was real with her. I bought property from you two, so, and I never thought about calling you about this, but, um, it's had a subtitle search done on it.
Okay.
Arnold had it, or whoever owned it.
Whoever did the title search, just request a copy of all the documents that go with the title search, so your lawyer or whoever you're working with can double check all those legals.
Well, Mr. Shuck, I think, too, you and I talked on the phone, too, and...
Yeah.
Sometimes you can't, you can't resolve with your neighbors. We just had an example of that in the last one. But if you've been paying taxes on, and it's on your deed on the property line, and based on that evaluation, I would think that you would have, if you got an attorney, you would have a leg to stand on. Because, of course, if I had my, and I bought up a mine, I'd want that land. Exactly. You don't wanna give it up. I, I, I don't know that we can do anything, okay, in that regards, legal wise, but I'm not disagreeing that, you know, and mistakes are made. Commissioner Todd made a good point. Uh, it was sold as this property when we bought it. It may have been wrong then, I'm not saying it is. And then now we have another person who's saying, well, this is my property. I, I would, I would talk to your, your attorney about it. I realize that's expensive and it costs money, but that's how it will ultimately get resolved. Um, but you would have a good leg to stand on if your deed says this is your property and you've been paying it. Your taxes...
Well, I've maintained a fence and whatever, you know, for fifteen years.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think you have a good argument on it. You, you have a good argument for a case, I, but mistakes happen and, and maybe he's wrong or she's wrong or whatever, but, uh, that's the only way it's gonna be permanently resolved.
Well, I just want...
Well, I'm glad you came in.
I've never been to a meeting, so I guess, a little experience and I appreciate your thoughts.
We wanna at least direct you in the right direction. I just don't think there's anything that we can do from a legal standpoint.
The only reason I came is, he's talking about fencing what he considers his property. And then he wants to subdivide, so...
Well, with some experience on civil cases, I would say that if you got an attorney, and I'm not giving legal advice, but, uh, you could get a stay on that until that was resolved in, in civil court. So, uh, I, I, we'd have to talk to your attorney and get that advice, but if he did that, you could, you could get that stopped at least until a judge ruled on what was right and what was wrong.
There's one there for hire.
Trying to keep me alive and beat me away, cause I keep moving. All right, well, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph, for coming in, Ralph.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we put library board?
Yeah.
Library board.
New business. How long is it?
I, didn't we just see you last night?
I know. Did anybody get any sleep? A lot cooler in here than last night.
Yes, yes, I do. Welcome. Can you state your name for the microphone? You don't have to get out, just...
Kathleen Kirk.
Who wants to kick us off? You want to do it, or? Now, we just gotta figure out how to get them through the last fiscal year. Well...
I thought, I thought we discussed that last night. So, what'll happen is, so, I made the adjustment that we talked about last night. Took that out on financial admin, put it into their account. What will happen is, so, you guys will approve the budget and then, um, I'll get those, all the numbers to Jen. We have to set up some new accounts, cause there are a few new accounts. Um, we'll get that in our system, get all the new numbers, and then we'll roll over into our new fiscal year. Once she does that, and it's in the new system, we're gonna have to get all that to Suzie, cause Suzie has to roll the same numbers into her accounts. Then we can do a prepay to the library and they can decide how much they want, cause normally they do quarterly. Um, and then we always give them their first one in July and we usually always do a prepay. So, we'll figure out a quarter of their total amount.
Welcome.
And you just have to approve the prepay now, um, in a public PD, so that we can do that prepay. And then I'll call her just as soon as that check's done and she can come over and get it.
What Mike was saying last night was, that was, this, this, your, her, have problems now?
They always do.
Oh, is it?
It's, it's always like that. It's, it's always, we always give it to them and it's...
Okay.
Even though it's last fiscal year, they pay it in this fiscal year.
Okay, I didn't, see, I didn't realize that left, but yes.
We can't, we can't go back into last fiscal year. That's already closed out. It was closed out long federal.
Okay. So, we got, we got handled?
Yes. You just have to approve, you just have to, once, once we're done visiting...
Yeah.
You'll approve the budget.
Budget.
And then you'll have to make a motion to...
A prepay.
Prepay to the library as soon as, um, we roll.
As soon as you get, they've got the exact amount that you're into.
Yep.
It was six seconds ago, but...
If the board doesn't mind, um, Commissioner Bourdon, you made a good point yesterday about, talking about, they may end up ahead of the game at the end of this year. More experienced employees, if you would mind touching, so she understands that.
Well, that's what, yeah, as far as the, um, the pay, we were talking about, uh, the two individuals and their retirement on that. And, and the, the difference that's going to be, we do, we're gonna be noticing, um, we've been discussing on how large, um, the benefits, insurance, things like that, as far as whether or not individuals have taken them. We're, we're going to be setting pretty good on your budget as far as if you're comparing year to year, from last year's budget and looking to match a dollar amount. Um, I understand that attempt, but I, I believe that, that the budget that, that we noticed last year with the library had is, uh, going to be easier to attain this year.
Okay, with the fewer...
Fewer benefits.
With, with benefits and stuff. And then we had also, um... We're just trying to go through stuff and kind of reduce line items and stuff, so, you know, even in payroll and benefits, it's gonna reduce eighteen thousand, it's only twenty eighteen or nineteen thousand. And that, that was figured off of that three hundred ninety thousand, the first three years. But we can drop some of the health supplies and stuff, we're hoping to lower some of the other benefits, so... So, with the fifty thousand that was added last night, um, the total will be three forty-one, nine fifty-seven, ninety-seven. That's really close to what we came up with. We came up with the three fifty-five. Yep. So, that, we appreciate that.
Well, and like I said, the difference of no insurance, um, not a highest rate, and that could make that...
I could take that if you want.
Well, no, I would just say, I think, I think you'll be sitting okay.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah.
I think we're doing really good. And then I've got two part-time people in Upton, instead of a part and full-time.
Right.
I think that we should be pretty good this year. And Nate's part-time doctor. Yeah, and Nate's gonna give us a break on our, on our job offer.
Free.
I'll free Nate. I'll, I'll give you a, I'm gonna, I'll leave that out of the minute, so it's not in my...
And that's long, Karen.
Come on, come on.
So, that will be acceptable to the library and the board?
Yes, that will be. And I appreciate you guys.
And part, and part of that was, I mean, this, you get, this is for current pay scale, it's not for increases in pay scales.
There's no increases.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you want us to figure that in. I mean, the staff would like it.
Yeah, so, everybody would...
So, would everybody else. No, there's no pay increases. Um, and the two part-timers that we have in Upton are actually right at or less than what we were paying the full-time employee, without the benefits, cause they won't have benefits.
It'll be interesting to see at the end of the year how it breaks down.
It will.
Well, we're grateful to the board and we appreciate your, your concerns. Thank you for coming in and...
Thank you for allowing us to...
Glad we can at least come to an agreement, so...
Yeah, cause we work real close together, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Karen. I took you out of the paper off, right?
So... I just need a motion to approve this number twenty-five budget and the board's signature on revenue twenty-four nineteen.
Gotcha. Go move.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion on the table to approve the twenty twenty-five budget and the board's signature, as they're second.
Second.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? I was just gonna say, thank clerk and the other elected officials for crediting numbers working, yes, if they did.
Thanks, we're four. Four, how about that? I know, next year's gonna be terrible.
I have a question. What, once the budget's done, do, is there, you know, goes out every...
Yeah, so...
I was gonna say, put on that email, a reminder that, uh, everybody's pretty, keep to the budget numbers, yeah. I don't know what the rest of the board feels about adding a little notation about that in the email, but I certainly would be for it.
Please start buying generic, everything. Borrowed from your neighbor.
Donations are accepted.
No one's gonna say that.
I understand, boy. What was your number for us?
Um, I'll get it when it comes back to me.
All right, thank you.
Just add it.
Yeah. Your budget, I missed it.
Twenty million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Thank you.
And then don't forget to come back and circle in the, for those, all those, um, liquor permits, please. Can't choose ones. Not great, early. No, nope. Um, it'll, it'll all have a presence at the next... Good job, Karen, and finally, finally, everything.
You're welcome, Becky.
We're getting better. Here's the question. Um, Ms. Drew, what?
Before Drew, I'd be here today to try to sort of give her updates.
Awesome.
So, I can help answer any questions, material that I've been working on. Although, most of those things that you've been representing the county on together, so...
Good job, Karen.
We're trying, so that's the battle.
There's a lot, Drew.
Oh, my gosh.
Constant fight all the time.
Yeah, this administration has, I guess, I haven't been doing this very long, but it seems like they set a new record on how many things they're trying to shut down the pipe.
This is terrible.
Yeah.
Every part of the state is one of them. You know, they're not just catching on one loose group, it's...
Well, it seems like you guys almost get one thing settled down and they throw something else at you, but it's terrible. And it's sad, because they have absolutely no idea what's going on here.
Watch the right hand, Bill, look at what the left hand's doing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I bet not one of them...
It is. Oh, no. They probably didn't Jackson.
Well, yeah. That's true.
In the real world, they have no clue, no connection. None.
Getting rid of that Chevron law, though, is gonna be a huge factor in the states, being able to argue against a lot of these things.
What, what's that?
The Chevron law that they, the Supreme Court, I think it's gonna help us be able to argue our case much better.
Okay.
Yeah, Supreme Court...
Oh, what?
Did away with it.
I think so.
And it gave power to, um, say if you were BLM and you sent in a specialist with longer bats, it gave, it gave power to that person. And now that power's been taken away and it's back to the judge.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll be helpful.
Yeah. Who are you watching?
Something really big just crawled across, um, paper.
It looked like a black loafer.
I thought it was a spider, but then it flew off. So, where was screen two? Well, I just caught it out, out of the corner of my eye. woke me up.
It's the ghost from upstairs that's taking a different form.
Sorry, I didn't look at that.
If the board doesn't have any objections, we can keep moving on. So Drew, if she's on. Drew, are you, are you with us?
He's a big sir, this is more, I want to see the lobby, you're trying to walk out there.
It's too cold in here today. I had to go get a coat.
I'm sitting right here. The air runs around that tube. I'm at the end of the tube.
I go upstairs, I go upstairs to my studio and of course, everything rises hot. It's been unbearable the last few days.
Your paints are rusting though.
Yeah, I think there's a procedure.
Actually, that's not bad for my paints, but I bet to bring an extra fan, turn the air conditioning, the wind unit of the upstairs fall down a few degrees just so I can stand working up there. It got cold in here. I felt stupid going up, coming across the street back here, the coat in my hand. And it's warm as blazes out there.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, what, the high 80s today?
Yeah, we're in a little bit of a cooling trend, but boy, it sure was hot this weekend. It was just unbearable.
I couldn't work outside on property.
And I really wanted to do some yard work, host.
I went to the garden at 5:30 down the way. I think you had to, it was just too hot.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a light so hearing to the hallway.
What do you write in the first one?
But they, they were, that's, that's saying with less than mine was so good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. You gotta worry about. Get him cut.
Yeah, you should, you should have that.
I did.
You know, Linda...
It's coming at you, you think your license may be here.
They're playing, they were just getting ready to list it for sale.
They need to leave their collar on so they can't leave the property or something. Our dog would just go and probably lie and he goes to the green field and has to stop. They're 30 days. There's other places they could do, you could put in there.
Did she forget?
No.
That's her.
That's good.
Has she called her?
Where's the jelly?
She, she should be there early. It's not like she's busy. Nothing to do. She should be here for an hour before.
She got them broke out.
Or she's right, already had five meetings.
Whoa.
She had her Sunday with Laura or after. Or no.
I'm not embarrassed.
She had to ask Becky what time hers was so she could find out what time ours is.
I'm not old enough to tell.
But she had to get us.
Yeah.
Get a call schedule. Well, and I can never tell for sure because I never know how long our meetings are. A lot of things are always so slow.
Yeah.
You got a hookup, right?
They said they'd come out of the trunk.
Took some chocolate almonds to lead with me on Saturday. And I forgot to eat them on the way up there. And so while I'm at the neutrino day, there just bacon in the car. I opened that up and I had a chocolate soup with almonds in the box. Oh, it was terrible.
I can't get over the amount of little kids that have been...
Drew, are you on yet?
And I've died since people, parents walking their kids in the car and be gone for seven hours.
I do not, I do not get...
Do we want to jump to public comment, commissioners' comment, and then come back to it? Okay. All right. Public comments, are any public comments?
I have one. I don't know.
Could you state your name?
Yes, my name's Kaylee Cool. After listening last night and kind of hearing you have some struggles, I'm educating myself on kind of how this stuff works. What I do for a living, I help empower people to help, help themselves. And so with, I have to be very resourceful. And so I, I kind of get excited, I can find opportunities to maybe find something that are, help people or the community. And so I went home last night and was researching to see if I could find anything that we might be able to use to help all of us. And I wanted to see if you guys knew about what Governor Gordon had recently opened up about the Wyoming Grant Assistance Program. It just opened up and I think it'd be interesting to look into to see if we can receive some services to help us. Anyone, the library, the fair, the whole community. And we can submit requests for technical assistance now. So the enrollment process over. And some of the things that we can get for free, because we're your local government agency, is that they can help with training and webinars, general exploratory assistance, needs identification, planning, project scoping and review, funding opportunity identification, stakeholder coordination, grant application, development, post award support, federal fund, match information and other resources. So I just wanted to kind of mention if anyone knows about it, I think it would definitely be something worth looking into to see if there might be some grants or something out there where we can have people help us and help community members who may be needing these grants, educate themselves on how they can do it themselves, how they can manage it themselves. And might as well utilize this source as if it's something that we potentially use as a community. So that was my public comment. I added one more thought.
We appreciate it. Maybe help them if you could use some of that information to Kim.
I have copies of pre-ized them, like.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
But thank you for your comments.
Of course.
Drew's on.
Drew's joined us. Hi Drew.
Hi Commissioners. I could not be happier to hear somebody in the audience talking about the Grants Management Office. So whoever that was, I am Drew Palmer and I'm the Grants Integration Manager who was on the webinar last Friday. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, and I'll let you take us off.
Okay, well, let me just start and end with the Grants Management Initiative. She is right, we are twisted up. And we are here to help. And so just be patient with us, but be, please use us as a resource because this is going to be a fantastic opportunity for our state agencies, our counties, municipalities, small businesses and nonprofits. And we are here to make sure that Wyoming can better stack and break federal and state funding opportunities to improve and make our communities stronger. So if you need anything or any information, please reach out, I'm happy to share that with you. So Commissioners, I just have a few quick updates for you regarding the Newcastle BLM. I have talked to Chad Kraus and we're kind of in a holding pattern. The contractors are working on drafting the plan revision. They are still saying that it's set to come out sometime around this, sometime around September for a 90-day review. So if there are any specific things you think we need to meet with BLM on between now and the first of September, let me know. I just talked to Niobrara County and they couldn't, they didn't have anything off the top of their head. So if there's anything that you think we should talk with them about before the draft comes out, please let me know. Any questions on BLM?
No questions at this time, Drew.
Okay. Black Hills. So Black Hills has been delayed a little bit. The Notice of Intent is scheduled to come out at the end of this year, first part of next year. The Mountain Planning Services Group, which is the Forest Services NEPA Group in Denver, they are also responsible for the Old Growth Plan Amendment that's coming out nationally. So I think they got delayed with Black Hills because of that, but a little bit of delay in the Black Hills is probably a good thing. I don't think that's going to hurt us. We did have a tour last Wednesday in the Medbo with, for the Old Growth stuff, for the Old Growth Plan Amendment. So they had a tour on the same day in regions across the country. Wyoming's was the most well-attended. We had the number two person in the Forest Service there, the Deputy Chief Chris French attended. Caleb was also there. And we did a tour and then more importantly, MICA set up a cooperating agency meeting after the tour for just cooperating agencies with the Forest Service. And it honestly was probably one of the, it was the best conversation we've had with the Forest Service since we started this project. And I think that we were able to understand some things that we didn't understand before. There, there are conversations I can't necessarily share with the public, but I think we now better understand what the Forest Service was trying to accomplish. And I think Wyoming now can focus on the, on the top three or four priorities that we really want to get through to make this a better project for Wyoming. So I think that that was all good. I guess I would ask Caleb if he has anything additional to add for that tour.
No, I think we covered it pretty well, Drew. I think, like you said, we got some clarification. Some of the folks that are on this project team for the Old Growth Plan Amendment on a national level were there and were able to answer a lot of questions as well as provide some feedback as to specifics that they were wanting to get feedback on, some specific aspects of it. And, and that really helped us. And I think it was really nice to just talk with people in person and not over Zoom all the time because obviously the national scale level project like this, you're, you're meeting with people over Zoom. So we put names and faces together. And I think something we can all be proud of is that Wyoming is really leading the charge on, on this effort, you know, as far as cooperating agency participation goes and that is on a national level again. So I'm excited to be a part of the effort in Wyoming and I think that we are in a much better position to make substantive comments and comments that will really be helpful in helping to shape what that looks like in the future.
Thanks Caleb. I, so we are in the draft DIS period right now. We're reviewing it. Comments are due in September. I think we're going to do a similar thing as what we did with Sage Grous. I think that MICA and I will come up with a template for the counties and then we'll plug our own additional information into the letters to have you submit. So that should be coming your way probably mid to late August. Are there any questions on that?
No questions, Drew.
Okay, couple more things. Sage Grous, MICA and I are back engaged with the state leadership team for Sage Grous, both with state agencies but also our federal partners. So we're working through some of the comments and, and working towards the final. I think the final's going to be out probably sometime in September, October timeframe, just so you know. Thunder Basin Grasslands. So MICA has scheduled a Thunder Basin National Grasslands Working Group meeting for next Wednesday, July 24th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the library in Douglas. I will not be able to be there, but he is going to record it. And so if anything comes up, I can address it after that time, but I just wanted to let you know that there is a working group meeting. They will most likely talk about updated mapping, control, flight management and just implementation of the, of the plan. Any questions on that?
No questions.
Okay. And the last thing I just wanted to update you on, just so you're in the loop. Campbell, Conover's and Johnsons Counties did file an extensive protest on the BLM's decision to not lease coal. Today is the deadline for the governor and the AG's office to file their consistency review. Our protest did help inform that consistency review. So that should get filed today. I don't think, I hope, hold out a whole lot of hope that the BLM's going to change their mind on the decision. So it's probably going to need the litigation, but I just wanted to keep you in the loop because no leasing of coal in Campbell County is going to affect Weston County. I think with that Commissioners, that concludes my report. Are there any other questions for me? And then I don't know if Jeannie's on and if she has anything to add. Are there any other questions from me and then I don't know if Jeannie's on it, if she has anything to add?
Any other questions? Now as always, thank you Drew for joining us and giving us an update, if we have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you Drew.
Thank you Commissioners, thanks for your support.
Thanks Drew.
Okay, uh, is there any other public comment back where we were? Commissioners, how?
Commissioners, I have one thing, just, it's, I guess, public comment, but also tapping on the end of Drew's comments. Um, I would encourage the Commissioners, if, if available or if it works out for you to, you know, come and join some of these meetings as well. Um, I think it's really impactful to see so much representation for Wyoming in these meetings, but I think it means a lot to the Forest Service and BLM and other, and these other federal entities too, to see vocal representation from county Commissioners as well in these meetings. Because that just kind of bolsters what other entities like myself and Drew and others are doing as well, you know. Um, and so, and Nate has been, been able to join us for, for a bunch of the different meetings, a lot of the BLM Plan Revision meetings and stuff. But I would encourage you, I know everybody's busy and it's just one more thing to add to your schedule. And, uh, but if you are available, I would encourage you to, to jump in on those meetings and, and, you know, just, you know, let them know that you're engaged, that you're invested in this too and that we're, that you, you, uh, you know, and learn a little, little bit more about, you know, some of these challenges that we're facing and stuff too, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll keep fighting the good fight, but I was happy to have your support and show your face and be a part of the process too, so. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners comment, you want to start us off? Commissioners comment?
Sure, I think, uh, I guess it's just based off of the discussion we had two weeks ago, roughly, a brief discussion about basically focusing on pay schedules within the county. Law enforcement has a mechanism, I think, already in place. Unfortunately, we're low for statewide on our average, but I don't know if we can fix that problem. Our county offices, like our clerk's office, and they have a tiered mechanism. Extension, we don't have a mechanism, um, that we're, I'm aware of. And I guess food for thought to maybe add to next meeting would be for people to go home and sit and think about, are we going to focus on a training-based or a further education-based increase for our employees, can we even afford to do that? Um, do we, um, try to figure out something with, with these offices that don't have these tiered mechanisms for them to enhance their, their pay within their, their offices? I just, there's a lot of different dynamics to it that it's going to be difficult to figure out and unfortunately, we live in a county that doesn't have a lot of money to just throw money at, at people and I, I don't know. I think if we could, maybe go home and put some thought behind it and what we would like to focus forward, moving forward.
Thank you Commissioner. Is that, is that every?
Yeah, I don't know what else to add to it. I mean, Becky could be great, I think she's going to reach out, maybe try to find some information with other counties you're doing, maybe exclusively like extension. Roden Bridge has a mechanism, we have mechanisms already, but then maybe those aren't the best mechanisms, maybe they have something else that are doing that.
And the thing that we'll have to focus on now, you know, we'll have to go into the next this year, but at least we have something to focus on and I'll just, I'll reach out to the counties and see what they do, like where are the clerk's offices and, I mean, Roden Bridge, I think he has something in place. Bryan has something in place, but, you know, like clerical, we can at least see how the other offices.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it stinks to tell somebody, yeah, you're going to get educated, but we're not going to pay you anymore when you do, you know, I mean. And then, and maybe that's, we've had that discussion, that's part of the problem of living where we live. We don't necessarily have those funds, so, I mean.
And, and like we discussed, you know, the trouble with that, each office, you have to get training, education every year and in order to keep your job, I mean, it's just.
Commissioner, you?
I just wanted to remind everybody that fair starts in eighteen and encourage everybody to get out and take part and enjoy it.
I would like to commend Francie and Billy for their endeavors with the Fair Board. I think they really exceeded some expectations in those, in those areas. I appreciate the involvement, the concerns on the different crunching numbers and I would eventually like to see them receive their checkbook back, some, I think a few small details will.
Thank you. I'd like to just thank the department heads and for all the number crunching. The budget's been pretty stressful, I appreciate the work and all the work you put into it. Um, I also agree with Commissioner Todd, um, and maybe that picture of the tier system or the wage system, maybe it's not the same for every department. I, I, I know it's a lot more work, I, I don't know, but I agree with, we live in a county that's very, uh, it's revenue, I'll call it revenue controlled, um, so we have limited resources to act on, but certainly the employees of the county, or any employees for that matter, deserve, uh, to improve their lifestyle as they go on, especially for performing and their work. So, uh, I would, I would support any type of, uh, ability to do that, so, thank you. Anything else? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board or County Commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.